Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, that's never sounded better.
That is awesome.
Thank you.
That is awesome. Call this meeting to order for the March 2022 regular school board meetings, the original being Boston Community School Corporation. Please let the record reflect that all of our board members are present in person today. And our most wonderful part of our program, our meeting is always the Mustang Moment. So, Dr. Sanders, would you like to introduce them?
Yes, I think we started this a couple of years ago as an opportunity to show off the great things that our students are doing in our schools. And so, I was very excited when we got to March and it was the Edgewood Intermediate Schools' turn to be the Mustang Moment. And I got the email that said that we were going to have a choir here tonight. And I heard this choir sing the National Anthem at the IU Women's Basketball Game, and they were awesome. I was very proud of them. So, I want to turn things over to our talented music teacher. I say talented, I was thinking about this today, because she's talented not only as a teacher, but she's a wonderful singer. And so, we're very lucky to have someone of her capabilities with us. So, I'm going to let you introduce them and go for it.
Mrs. Oh, there, thank you. I am Mrs. Brunson. I am the music teacher at Edgewood Intermediate School, grades third through fifth. And when they enter into fifth grade, they get an option to do an extracurricular choir with me. And I love that because I think it's a wonderful stepping stone into what we're good at here at Edgewood. And we are very, very, very good in music. And so, this gives them a little taste of what to expect in the coming years, because we do have competition choir programs, and both at the junior high and the high school level. So, we do some dancing. They're not happy with the dance that we're working on right now, but that's a little tricky. But you know what? My motto in my class is, "I don't do hard." It might be a little tricky, but nothing we do in music is hard, right, friends? You better know that. Because you know I'm right. And then, but this choir developed a long time ago in another school. And throughout the years, they've been getting some recognition as far as people knowing that we have a group that's willing to come out and sing different kind of programs. Some of the things that my choirs have done is, there was the Kiwanis Pageant, and they needed some entertainment while the pageant contestants would get dressed and all due it up for their next event. So, my kids would come out there and sing a song while they were getting ready, and that was a fun experience. They have also sung at things like the Educator of the Year Awards, where they were the feature there. One of the favorite things I love each year is taking them to an IU game. This year, they sang at a volleyball game and a women's game. And I tell you what, it is something when they come out there and they stand on that floor of Assembly Hall and looking around. I know you guys were a little scared at that time, but it was a lot of fun, wasn't it? Yeah, absolutely. And if we never go anywhere and do anything, you're never going to get over that fear. So, I love taking them out. We've done farmer's market, we've done the festivals. So, I just love showing them off. And I push them a little bit, too. In some of our songs, we had songs where we're singing three-part harmony. And that's pretty phenomenal for this age group. We do have, most of the time, two-part harmony. And today, we're going to sing two different songs for you. The first one is called "Clean My Room." I always include a song that they have to kind of draw upon their acting ability, but I don't think they probably have to act when it comes to the messy rooms, I'd imagine. So much so, and then we'll close it out with a song called "Alone Part Two." I don't know what the part two is. I will tell you that we are working for a full concert, and they will be performing that at the Tivoli Theater in Spencer on May 3rd. That is also a wonderful experience to be on that stage. It's not just for movies. They have, they're on there with all the starry lights and all of that. So, friends, let's get to our positions.
Oh.
Exactly.
Thank you, boys and girls.
Thanks a lot. That was great.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
It's wonderful. Good job.
Thank you, Mrs. Brunson.
When I was trying to set up the recording of the Star Spangled Banner for one of the sectional games, I talked about technology.
What's that?
I said, talking about technology. I was setting up the Star Spangled Banner for one of the sectional games, had it set up, YouTube, started with a commercial.
Oh, yeah.
You did a wonderful job. Next, we have visitor comments.
First speaker is Paul Miller.
Oh, we're good. I'll be honest with you, obviously, the last time I was here, I spent out like 600 and some words in three minutes. So, tonight's just speaking from the heart. I do want to say thank you for, obviously, shifting focus and being able to see the faces. Obviously, it was very nice to see their face. There was, obviously, pure joy that was on the faces of most of these kids that was out here doing this. You know, biggest thing for me is, is obviously, it is a time of healing, and I don't want to go backwards. Okay? So, I think I'm probably the only one speaking tonight, and I'm the only one signed in on it, so it's okay. You know, what I would just say is, I don't want to go backwards. I don't want to go back to this. I realize that, you know, maybe you feel like at some point in time, maybe you need to pull that back out. You know, obviously, there was very few that was obviously wearing masks out here. In my house, I've got two daughters. One that, you know, I can't PG say what she said when, you know, I told her that she could take off her mask. All right? The other one, she still wears it every day. All right? It's loosening up, thankfully. She's starting to heal a little bit, but unfortunately, two years of it, she's not there. Okay? I don't want to go back. All right? I've asked her why she wears a mask, and I'll be honest with you, she hides behind it. She's that adolescent teen phase, and she hides. Okay? Because it's that awkward social phase. All right? And I don't ever want to go back to this. I don't want anybody else to ever have to go back to it. All right? I had a lot more that I was going to say in regards to it, and I'm not. I will probably send you an email in regards to it, just to, you know, be nice. All right? But I just, I don't want to go back. All right? So, I'm begging and pleading with you, telling you I don't want to go back. I'm going to say thank you for shifting phases and going away, because I'm, like I said, I'm very happy to see what happened tonight. I didn't know they were singing tonight. I thoroughly enjoyed that 10 minutes, even with the technology failures. All right? Because I think it's a wonderful thing. Okay? See you.
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
That was it.
Okay. Next is our consent agenda, and we have approval of minutes from the February 21st, 2022 regular board meeting. Financial, we have the Treasurers' Report for February of 2022. And Mr. Durnold, the claims force?
Thank you, Mr. President. For gross wages on February the 4th, 2022, $669,478.57 for gross wages on February 18th, 2022, $661,396.92 for preclaims on February 1st through February 28th, $901,127.06 for claims vouchers on 3/21/2022, $366,824.10 for claims vouchers, Forest Hills vouchers, February the 22nd, 2022, $4,086.28 for a grand total of $2,602,908.93.
Mr. Durnold. Consideration of donations. Tri-Cappa of Ellisville has four here, $75 for the EPS Art Program, $100 for the EPS Theme Program, $75 for the Junior High Art Show, and $100 for the Junior High Steam Program. There's also $477.69 from Donors Choose to Mississippi A's Classroom Supplies. For personnel, we have the 1 through 10, which is personnel resignations, retirements, nonreunions, leaves, and terminations, and E1 through 17, which is appointments and transfers. There is also a consideration to approve the Intermediate School 4th Grade Class Trip to Connor Prairie. Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Second. Any questions or comments? Are any of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Anything you want to mention, Dr. Sanders?
I sure do. I would like to recognize three wonderful ladies, awesome teachers. Kristy Bennett, who is a teacher at EIS, has taught for 35 years. Karen Burris, also a teacher at EIS, who also has taught for 35 years. And also Kathy Hastings, who's taught for 45 years at Edgewood Junior High School. Just want to thank them for all their years of service, and I don't know how to even measure the impact that they have had collectively on probably thousands of students in our community. And then, I'd also like to welcome back Jennifer Anderson, who will be serving as our new Director of Student Services. She will be overseeing our mental health team and our Tims Grant, which she was responsible for working with the IU School of Psychology to write the million-dollar grant. She'll be working with Title I and our English Language Learner Program. And we're just thankful to have Jennifer back, because besides all of her regular duties and responsibilities, she just brings so much to our team overall. And just seeing her out there tonight did my heart good, and so, I'm really glad to have her back. And one of the biggest reasons for having her back, when we talk about all that we've accomplished with mental health, she is going to be the catalyst to sustaining that for years to come. So, Jennifer, glad to have you back.
Welcome. Thank you very much. The Assistant Superintendent's Report, Ms. Durnold.
So, you guys should have the cash flows up there. I think I put them on the left-hand side for you there. I'll keep it pretty brief tonight, but the education fund, February numbers were really accurate. We're very pleased with how well those came in. I did update the projections for our February ADM count, which did stay even with our September ADM count, which is a really positive trend from what's happened historically for the last few years. In the last few years, we've dropped anywhere between 12 and 50 students at the February ADM, and we did not lose a single student this year on the February ADM. So, because of that, I adjusted those projections to show there's no reconciliation there during the April, May, June months in our state tuition, which provides a nice boost to what it is that year-end projections look like at this time. So, that's kind of what you'll see as far as the difference between last month and this month. That was the big difference there. The debt service fund, there's nothing much to note there. There was no activity in the debt service fund during February, and that's as planned and normal, so nothing to worry about there. Operations Fund, February numbers were almost dead on the projections. Again, was very pleased with the way those rolled out. Feel like we have a very good clue in on where our numbers are going and what it is that we're accounting for as things change and move around. There's really nothing major to note from the revenue or expenditures. It was a very normal month. And so, again, because of that, the year-end projections don't look much different than what they did during the last, the last meeting. They're a little bit more positive, but again, with the projections, I would always like to be a little bit high and not a little bit too low. I'd rather be on the conservative side so that we're in a good position. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Just nice to hear good news.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we have consideration to approve the Build, Learn, Grow Child Care Stabilization Grant. Mr. Durnold?
Yeah, so this is another grant that Matt Wooden was able to secure. It's from the fall of 2021, the Family and Social Services Administration, the FSSA, which is the Office of Early Childhood and Out-of-School Learning, awarded RBB a little over $131,000 as a part of this grant. We plan to use this grant under the area of Facility Fees, Maintenance, and Improvements category, with specifically looking at the outdoor play space for the new preschool addition. So, we're really excited about just building up that area for that play space that will hopefully include an outdoor classroom, pool in place, playground equipment, a bike, walkway, pathway for our students to get out and move. It's going to be a really nice area for just another added space that our students and staff will be able to use. I'm also hoping that here in another month or two, we possibly could be coming back with a second round of this. There's a second round of the funding that Mr. Wooden is looking into, so hopefully, we'll be able to get that. Playgrounds are not very cheap, and so, we're really excited about these funds to be able to really improve a nice space for our kids and our staff. So, with that, I ask for your approval of that grant, please.
I will move approval.
I'll second.
Seconding. Any questions or comments?
Well, I just want to thank Mr. Wooden for taking the time to put this all together, and it sounds like it's going to be money well spent. So, thank you.
I think our team does a really good job of seeking out grants and keeping their eyes and ears open, and so, I appreciate that, because they do help us with special, especially with the special things.
Yes.
So, we appreciate them. Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have consideration to approve the AIG 401A Six-Year Cycle Restatement.
Yeah, so, a few months back, I brought you the 403B restatement. This is the 401A restatement. This document was a little bit longer than the last one that we, that we had done as a school corporation. The last one was about 14 pages. This one was 43 pages, simply because they added in everything that could possibly be in there. The IRS document just has to include those, so as you noticed in that document, there were sections that we didn't have certain things filled out because they weren't applicable to us. And so, I worked with Ferguson Law, I worked with the AIG representative, Susan Shachny, who's our benefits coordinator. We spent a lot of time looking over this to make sure it matched what we were currently doing, and that they simply laid over our old plan onto this new document, and we also cleared up some language to make sure that it was easier to read, easier to understand, so that there couldn't be any mix-up in what it is that we were wanting to be done through that document. So, with that, I ask for your approval.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on this? Are any of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to approve the Neo Policy Revisions. It's Volume 33, Number 1, and Volume 33, Number 2. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, as you are aware, that last month, these policies, as you mentioned, Volume 33, Number 1, and Volume 33, Number 2, these revisions were presented to the board as a first reading, and tonight is your opportunity to approve those revisions. So, I recommend your approval.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
This is the second reading and voting on it, so we've had it on the agenda for two months now. Does anybody have any questions that they haven't been able to get answered?
I appreciate, I touched base with Dr. Sanders earlier today, and my questions were taken care of. So, I do think sometimes, and no offense, but I think sometimes lawyers like to change words just for the heck of it.
Maybe.
Ditto, ditto. Because I couldn't see any difference since the one that I was particularly interested in. But thank you.
Nothing further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the, to approve the 2022 Summer School Program.
Right, right. Every year, when we get ready to think about our summer school program, the teachers and the students begin to think about their students and their needs, their academic needs. And between now and the end of the school year, they'll develop the plan. What I present to you tonight is just kind of a basic overview of dates and hours, but as we get closer to the end of the school year, then they will identify which students need to be part of the summer school program in order to help them to improve and prepare for next year. As you see on here, Edgewood Primary School, they're looking at the dates of June 6th through the 23rd. They go Monday through Thursday. And now, EIS is going, wants to go July 25th through August 4th. And now EIS is going, uh, wants to go July twenty-fifth through August fourth. Um, and, uh, the reason for that, uh, once again, based on need. Uh, the primary school, they want to take those students fresh from the end of the school year and add on some additional, uh, skills and knowledge, uh, to help them to get ready for the next school year. Uh, the intermediate school and the junior high, you notice the junior high dates are also July twenty-fifth through August fourth. Uh, they want to bring the students in, uh, and, uh, go over some skills, uh, to give them a jump start to the new school year. Uh, and then, uh, the high school is June first through the twenty-fourth. And the main philosophy at the high school is credit recovery. And, uh, really that's based on how the students are doing, uh, this year and what courses they need to, uh, take some extra time to earn those credits, uh, over the summer. Uh, the hours are, uh, for the students are eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. Uh, teachers will be eight to twelve-thirty, uh, so they can have a little bit of time to prepare before the students get there. And we will once again provide, uh, transportation and free breakfast and lunch. Uh, we do, uh, receive funds from the state, uh, of, uh, that really, uh, never really quite capture all that we, uh, the funds that we need, uh, for summer school, but we will use CARES Act dollars to make up the difference, uh, this year. Uh, so I recommend your approval of the 2022 Summer School Program.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I, I did have a couple of, um, do we have any ideas to how, the extent, how many teachers might be involved or how many students? Well, at this point, and I know we're a couple of years where we didn't have summer school. And so I was just wondering what the, what sound, what, what the feeling is.
Right. We, we usually base that on, uh, we just, we have to turn in an estimated cost report. And, uh, we really don't know. It really is a guess. It's an estimate at this time. And as we get closer to, uh, summer school, we need to have, uh, uh, one teacher for every fifteen students. And, uh, so based on, uh, as the, the elementary and the junior high, as they identify which students need to, to be part of the summer s- school program, and the high school identifies, uh, what students need to make up the credit. Sometimes those are last-minute decisions.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's really difficult to say at this point.
Okay. And then, uh, the high school level in particular with credit recovery, how much of that will be the Apex, the computer-based instruction?
Right. So, uh, it just, once again, uh, depends on how many students. If we have, uh, enough students for, uh, for example, uh, English nine or, uh, ten, and we have enough students for, um, a full class, then obviously we'll have a teacher, uh, for that. Uh, if we, uh, have, uh, some, like math where we have, might have, uh, Algebra One, Algebra Two, first semester, second semester, basically we, we might have a mix of what's courses students need, uh, to recover their credits from. Uh, a course like that, we might use Apex, or we might use a combination of a teacher with Apex. Uh, it's all based on, uh, needs of our students.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to ask Dr. Sanders, when this, when this all unfolds, if we can get a report back about our enrollment, how many students took advantage of it this summer? And, and from a, uh, school standpoint, we need to be a pipe-piper. And, uh, explain this is going on this summer and what a great way to get caught up, because it's been a tough couple of years for kids. Absolutely. And, uh, get the communication out there and the marketing and so forth, because it can be a great, it can be a great catch-up for these kids.
Yeah, and, and what really helps a lot with that, uh, and it did last year, and I'm, I know it will this year, is being able to provide that option of transportation.
Right, right.
Uh, because otherwise, and some students have trouble getting here, and they don't get the help that they need.
Right. Yeah, my, my only concern about EIS and EPS being two separate timeframes with parents that have children in the same house, on going both ways. It's kind of, could be an inconvenience there, so.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have consideration to approve, approve the Community Foundation Grant Agreement. Dr. Sanders.
Yes, sir. Uh, every year, we receive a grant from the Community Foundation of Monroe County to, uh, pay for our, uh, family engagement coordinator, uh, for the school corporation, and that's Jill Ferguson. Uh, and Jill serves as a liaison between our schools and our families. Uh, just provides that connection, uh, to be able to address some issues that, that could cause a disconnect between the home and the school. And, uh, so she identifies, she works with parents, identifies the needs, uh, connects them to the right, uh, source that could help them. Uh, and by addressing those needs, then we eliminate, uh, potential, like I said, uh, issues that could come up, that could cause this, uh, disconnect between the parents and the school. Uh, she organized such things as Breakfast Buddies, book swaps, uh, Make and Take Nights, and, and several other events. Um, and so I would, uh, recommend your approval of this grant.
I move approval.
I second.
Good, and second. Any questions or comments? Did you mention the value?
Twenty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Anything further? Or nothing? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have consideration to approve the Tims Grant Agreement. Dr. Sanders.
Right. We're asking for an amendment to our Tims Grant Agreement, uh, to cover the addition of a graduate assistant. Uh, we had a school psychologist paid for through the Tims Grant that, that resigned. And, uh, so IU has a graduate assistant who will be able to come in and, uh, take up that role. That's the, the most efficient and quickest way, uh, to replace that loss, uh, of the school psychologist. Uh, and so in order to do that, uh, we're have, we have to move, uh, money from the personnel line to contractual services so that we could pay, uh, IU for that, that person.
I move approval of the, uh, amendment to the Tims Grant.
I'll second.
And this will be just a temporary for the rest of this year.
And this is just, this is just moving money that was already accounted for, for the psychologist, right?
That's right.
That's right, fine, okay.
Is it changing the amounts at all?
No.
It's changing the services that our students are receiving.
Right.
Anything further? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Do you have any miscellaneous information for us?
I do not tonight.
Okay, then we'll have the Superintendent's report.
All right. Well, uh, this is probably one of the most exciting, uh, Superintendent's reports that I think, uh, I've enjoyed giving. Uh, because, uh, as I was thinking about the rest of this school year, which I agree, it is so nice to come to school and not have to have masks on. Uh, it's hard to get used to that, uh, quite honestly. Uh, but there's so much that's going to happen this last quarter of the school year that I just had to share you, share with you, uh, what's going to be happening. First of all, and probably this is why I'm most excited, is tomorrow is move-in day uh, for our new, uh, Edgewood Tr- Early Childhood Center. Our, uh, actually, they've already moved furniture, uh, into the, the, uh, EECC. Uh, but our students will be, uh, having their classes for the first time tomorrow at the Edgewood Early Childhood Center. I want to thank our maintenance department, uh, Arnold Caldwell, uh, our custodians at EPS, uh, who on top of everything else, uh, had to put furniture together and, and wax floors and get it all ready for the students. And also our EE, uh, EECC staff and Matt Wooden. Uh, Matt Irwin and I went up there today and, well, we went up Friday, and I thought, oh my goodness, they have a lot of work to do. Uh, and we went up today, and it looks like they had a long time to get ready. They're, they're just about set, and we thanked everybody for their hard work. Uh, we'll, we'll have, uh, approximately ninety-two preschool students and eleven preschool staff moving into their new home, uh, which amounts to two full pre- K classes, one full-day three-year-old class, one half-day multi-age class, and one half-day self-contained class. Uh, so they're very excited about that. I, I can't wait to start tomorrow morning, go up there and see the, the faces on the, the kids as they walk into their new classrooms. We're already full. We've started our enrollment window, and we were full within twenty minutes. And we already have a waiting list of fifty-three students. We expect that to grow. So, um, we have a nice facility, but we're growing. And as a school corporation, we're gonna have to be prepared to make some of those decisions and plans to prepare for the, the growth. Um, in addition to what I just shared with you, uh, the, uh, opening up the, the preschool, the, uh, new Edgewood Early Childhood Center, it frees up space at EPS for, uh, some mental health offices. Our STEAM labs, which have been, uh, preschool classes, will now go back to, uh, their, their main purpose, which was being a STEAM lab. And also our Journeys Classroom and Pathways classrooms will have new homes. Uh, so we're very excited about that. Uh, our Innovative Learning Center is beginning to fire up. Uh, Mustang Corral is set for a soft opening around April fifteenth. Uh, so not too far, uh, away from now. Uh, equipment and furniture continue to arrive. And while that equipment is arriving, uh, they're introducing the ILC to students and teachers. Uh, as equipment arrives, they, it seems like there's no time between when they're, the equipment arrives and a teacher coming down and using that equipment for something going on in their classroom. So we're excited to see that fire up. Um, and then the spring just brings a lot of great things. We have our spring sports that, that we get to look forward to. Uh, the kindergarten welcome week will be April fourth through the eighth. Uh, show choir is going to Atlanta in April. Uh, and then, um, we are, uh, in the process of planning, uh, a showcase STEAM night, uh, in our schools. And, uh, the details and, and dates and times for that will be announced soon. Uh, fifth graders, uh, they'll be able to go to Bradford Woods this year, uh, May ninth through the eleventh. And then, of course, uh, our, uh, graduation, uh, for the class of two thousand twenty-two on June fourth. And then I also had to share some, uh, important visitors that we have had and will be coming, uh, on campus. Uh, not too long ago, the state came down, uh, to do a site visit for, uh, the Edgewood Junior High School, uh, STEM certification. And I, I, all I can say is it went very well. And, uh, they, seriously, they are very impressed. Megan Scott and, um, uh, some of the teachers and, and Jonathan Siglin, uh, made a presentation. And, um, sometimes I have a very nice job of being able to sit on those presentations and, and hear, uh, the great things that they're doing. And the people from the state were very impressed. So, and it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of work to, to earn STEM certification. And then, uh, Regional Opportunity Initiative, ROI, uh, they, uh, are working with a, another school corporation that, uh, wants to, uh, implement Ready Schools. And, uh, so ROI is going to bring, uh, representatives of, representatives of that school corporation to RBB to see what we have done and what we're doing. So excited about that. The, uh, redevelop, redevelopment, uh, commissioners, uh, will be, uh, coming to visit. The RDC will be coming to visit, uh, uh, hopefully in the next, uh, couple of weeks. We're working out on, working those dates. Uh, but the RDC provides, um, uh, funding for our, our Ready Schools and our STEM initiatives. And so they'll be coming and, and taking a look at what we're doing. And, uh, then, uh, I had the opportunity here, uh, State Representative, Representative Bob Heaton, uh, uh, last Friday at, uh, the power luncheon. And so I just happened to, uh, at the end, they, they give you an opportunity to ask questions. And I said, Representative Heaton, I don't have a question, but I have an invitation. And so I invited him to see our Innovative Learning Center and our Design Labs and, uh, STEM Labs. And, and so he's coming, uh, sometime at the end of April. Uh, working out a date with him, but he's definitely coming. And so we'll have more details on that in the future. Uh, those are some pretty cool visitors, uh, coming to see what, what RBB is doing. And, uh, so we'll be glad to brag on our students and our staff.
Wonderful. Quick question on the, uh, full enrollment for the preschool. What is, how many students is that?
Well, I, I think he told me they're eighty, they're at eighty-six, but it, uh, they have ninety-two this year. So I, I think it's somewhere between eighty-five and a hundred is, is full. It's generally depends, because they have such multiple different types of classes. Uh, and some are just part-time, some are full-time. And, uh, so somewhere eighty-five to a hundred is, is full.
Okay. Other questions? Um, our, RBB, RBB EA, um, uh, representatives aren't here this evening, so we'll go straight on to board member comments. And, Mr. Jacob.
Um, well, I want to thank Mrs. Brunz for bringing your students. Um, she taught my children, and she is such a joy to, to watch her teach. And it's exciting. I love to see her enthusiasm. Uh, it makes me very happy. So thank you for bringing them. They were wonderful. Um, thank you to Paul for your comment tonight. Um, I appreciate seeing that. Um, congratulations to the retirees. Um, and welcome again, Jennifer. So glad you're back with us. Um, and thank you again for all the donations. Um, we, we just can't deal without the donations, so thank you so, so much for that.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to thank bringing the kids in. That was great. I, I especially enjoyed the first one. I, I remember trying to get kids to clean rooms up, and, and I was the young father, so that was kind of neat. Uh, I, I, all I can say is I'm just so proud of the school system. It just seems like, uh, we're stepping forward every time. We're, we're getting people here to come into our system that we know are gonna be good for us, and we just continue to go. Our, our staff right now, our, our principals, assistant principals are fantastic to work with, and, um, I really appreciate it. And, uh, Dr. Sanders, thank you so much for your efforts. I appreciate that also.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucker.
Ditto what, what Mr. Irwin and Ms. Jacobs said. And thanks to Mrs. Brunz. Did I say that right?
Brunz.
Brunz, thank you. Uh, I was watching you work with the kids there, and I, I was having flashbacks. When I was about sixth grader, I got, I got cut from the church choir. And I thought, if I would have had you, I would have made the church choir. But, uh, my, my teacher told me to lip sync, and I didn't know what that was. But a couple of numbers, uh, one fifteen, a hundred and fifteen years is, is hard to replace with those three retired teachers. That's a lot of stinking teaching, a lot of impact they've had over the years. So congratulations to those folks. Uh, the number fifty-three, that's a challenge that we have. We, we have fifty-three people on the waiting list for preschool that we have to, to address at some point in the future. And, uh, I also wanted to thank Dr. Sanders for inviting me to the, uh, Chamber of Commerce banquet a couple of weeks ago, where they honored the teachers. Uh, RBB is very well represented, and that was a, uh, that was a very cheerful night. And, uh, thanks to Mr. Miller tonight for his comments. The one word that he said was healing. We gotta, we gotta start healing and, and continue to move forward. There's a lot of good things going on, and people are actually in a better mood when they don't have a mask on. I've noticed that. So, so thanks for all your work, Dr. Sanders.
Thank you.
Mr. DeBusschere.
I, I, the same. I appreciate Mr. Miller's comments. Um, uh, about a year ago, I thanked the General Assembly for the actions that they took to benefit public education. And, but I also said it was just a first step, and they kind of fumbled the ball this year. So, um, we've got a long way to go, and it really hammers at home when you have the kinds of losses that we're going to have this year, the teachers that we've lost last month, this month. And, uh, yeah, it's gonna be really hard to find. And we can't replace them, but I, we've got to put somebody in those classrooms that, uh, can take care of our kids, and it's gonna be hard. Um, so we need help from the General Assembly. Um, thanks so much to Tri-Cappa. They've been- Thanks so much to Tri-Cappa. They've been terrific supporters of our school system since I began teaching thirty-seven years ago, and it's just a terrific support. Welcome back, Ms. Anderson. Congratulations to all the winter sports teams, the music programs. They've had a great season. It was great coming over and seeing a track meet happening, because that means it's really spring. And then, to top it all off, I saw vertical steel in the new service center. So it's wonderful seeing the progress that's going on. Saw trucks parked over in front of the addition at the primary this morning and yesterday, and I know they've been working hard. And it was great seeing the flagpole that went up. But just on a personal note, Kristy Bennett, Kathy Hastings, and Karen Bradley, Karen Burris, they are super, I don't know how we're gonna replace them. My sons had, both of them had Miss Hastings. Kathy, or Kristy Bennett is just, she's one of a kind. I just really enjoyed getting to know her a little bit. And I hate losing Karen. She's just a dynamite teacher, and so it's gonna be hard. And a couple of those have been around longer than I was, which is really hard to believe. So, anyway.
Thank you all. I appreciate everyone coming this evening. What's hard about going last in these comments, everybody says everything, but I wanted to echo, you know, I will echo some of the fifth-grade choir was amazing. I just, so much love. Hearing those kids, I just wish I had gone down there and sat and watched their faces, so.
Next time.
Next time, if we do something like that, we'll have to take that into consideration. I appreciate Mr. Miller's comments. I believe that all of us want to heal, and all of us want to move forward, and none of us want to move backward. So I think there's a lot of commonality that we have now. The retirees, I know Kathy Hastings is the best out of all those, because her daughter and my daughter clogged together for a long time. And wonderful, wonderful person, and they all are, and I do want to welcome Jennifer Anderson back. We missed having her, and I'm glad that she's gonna be able to continue the stability of our mental health programs. Tri-Cappa is on our donation list very often, as its donors choose. The grant work that's been done, that's reflected in the agenda tonight, is amazing. And lastly, I want to cheer on the IU women in the continuation of their NCAA journey this evening at eight o'clock. So we're making good time.
What is being you or at Assembly Hall? Yes.
So I appreciate again you guys coming tonight, and I think you all up here, all you guys do, as board members and Dr. Sanders and Sherwin and the whole group. So we appreciate all of you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.